Today is September 26, 2016. I'm calling out the county officials for order. Today we have gene ledges from President Valley, United Methodist Church, who will do our implications. So while he comes forward to stand and raise that flag.
Let's pray. O'er God, Creator of all the heavens in the universe, first and foremost, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this new day of possibilities. We thank you for this day to make a difference in the lives of so many people in Potter County. So God, it is that we pray that you would guide us, you would give us wisdom, give us direction, and maybe we make decisions based upon what's best in light of all the people that represent Potter County in all the different precincts. So God, I thank you for the gathering of these people here today and all the people that have an interest in what goes on. We pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas way, our pledge of allegiance to the Texas way, one state under God, all around being indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we start, I just wanted to let everyone know that today is a special holiday. Are you 29 again?
I am 56.
Fifty-six.
Ameri-Pub.
You are...
That's the good word.
I was gonna say, I was gonna call you a liar, but I just didn't want to say it out loud.
Maybe you can do that.
Well, happy birthday. Okay, first thing on the agenda is recognition of minutes from September 26, 2016. Potter County officials, for any changes or additions you want to make to that. No, not, so recognized. Number two is budget amendments to consider enacted upon the approval of budget amendments for the current fiscal year into authorized accounting. Order two to prepare a budget amendment effective 9/30/16 and any necessary transfers per year. Transfers will be made within departments if number possible, otherwise contingency funds will be used. Carrie.
This is basically our end year pickup amendment. Just a quick review of the coming home, maybe adjustments that we can post back to you.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments for the current fiscal year to authorize the county auditor to prepare budget amendment effective 9/30/16 and to make any transfers per year.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Vouchers to consider enacted upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county office office for the period of September 7, 2016 through September 21, 2016. Take numbers 170742, 3170980, and wire transfers 783 through 76 in the amount of $3,378,696.07.
I move to approve the vouchers as presented.
In a second.
Second.
The motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Insurance report to recognize, insurance report, sorry, 4-1. Insurance report, okay, is there anything on that you want to talk about?
Yes, ma'am, I do want to draw the court's attention to one item on the insurance report dated 9/16/16, showing the TAC deductible credit in the amount of $37,400. I just wanted to let you know this is a portion of the reimbursement credit that resulted from the benefit year realignment that the court voted to do back in 1415 and on April 13 of 2015. We do, we are still awaiting the maximum out-of-pocket portion of that reimbursement and usually in the amount of $24,750 that will be forthcoming and will be shown on a future insurance report.
Okay, just to make sure I'm following you, this is when we made the change to match the payroll schedule?
No, we made a change to bring the plan year and the deductible year in line. And it resulted from prorating the deductible and the maximum out-of-pocket for that one year. And TAC agreed to reimburse the amounts over that prorated.
Carrie, I have just one question in regards to that same line item to deductible credit. Right under it is the TAC weekly claims run of $39,000. And you look further out and we have two there that look like they're about $77,000.
Yes.
Weekly run, so does, do we just take the deductible credit off of weekly run as a, like a difference?
No, it was that weekly claims run dated 9/19 was for $39,823.8. Those claims just vary from week to week, and the deductible credit has no impact on the claims runs. Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else?
None.
Okay, so recognized. Number five, arts program to consider enacted upon participation in the arts program offered by TAC HTPP for ACA tracking and reporting to the CSU to authorize county justice to sign an unlawful agreement and conduct those innovations.
It's that time of year again to determine how they're going to report to the IRS and the employees at the end of the year the amounts that are required under the Affordable Care Act to report insurance coverage and which dependents are covered and all of those kind of things. It's, last year was the first year that we had to report that. We did utilize arts last year. As you will recall, we are requesting that we again utilize TAC in the arts program to track those management periods and allow TAC to create our 1095C forms for both Potter County General and CSCD. Potter County forms and the services through TAC will be provided at no cost again to Potter County. But because CSCD does not utilize TAC HTPP for insurance, there will be $4.25 per form charge for them to report and track for CSCD and create those forms and report to the IRS. Last year, CSCD had 76 forms that were created, so based on those numbers, it will be a total amount of $323. Of course, that's based on last year's numbers, so those numbers may be up or down slightly this year. Carrie Eastralling indicated that he expected those numbers to be down slightly. And CSCD has agreed to reimburse Potter County for the $4.25 fee. So ultimately, we anticipate we have no cost to Potter County to do that. TAC is already set up to do all of that reporting, and it should be a seamless process to report for this year.
Okay, the only question is what will you do for the employees that aren't utilizing Time Clock Plus? How do you keep track of those? Are you pulling this data from Time Clock Plus?
We're pulling this data from payroll.
From payroll, okay.
Yes.
I move that we approve the use of the arts program offered by TAC, and which will include CSCD, authorize the judge to sign.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Do you have an original for me to sign? I'll get a memory that's active. Number six, treasures report to recognize the treasures monthly report. Good morning. Good morning.
Okay. Just to kind of bring you up today, just give you our totals throughout our different accounts and then all the community. Texpool Prime in general, I have $399,552.96. And just Texpool general is $51,395.73. Texpool Prime is earning 70 basis points, and Texpool is earning 37.5 basis points. Texas Class general, I have $4,040,430.95. And Texas Class is earning .77. Then in our checking A&amp;B balance, I have $9,554,243.69. And I'll talk about that earnings here in just a second. Cedars, we have a $2 million earning 55 basis points that will mature the 29th of this month. And I've already visited with A&amp;B, and we will transfer that fund over to our general checking because it's earning 55, and our checking account will be earning 75 basis points. Cedars, I have a $5 million Cedars that will mature March 30, 2017, and that's earning 65 basis points. So altogether, our cash fund this morning is $21,46,623.33. If you remember, when we started with A&amp;B, our checking account, they were going to give us a special rate, and it started at 70. And it increased to 72, but as our Texas Class was increasing, I called the bank just before I went to conference last week and talked to them. And so currently, they've raised our rate to 75 basis points. But I've got a calling with them this morning and talked to them this afternoon and see if they will either match our Texas Class or, I mean, I'm going to put the money where I can earn the most. So we're, we're working on that issue right now. And then another thing I want to bring to your attention is in Texas Class with our general operating fund, our year-to-date interest that we've earned is $40,336.66. And I also have the Sheriff's Admin Fund there, and year-to-date interest earned is $71,977.17.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Carrie, your question along those lines for the interest that's earned on, I'm assuming on the bond proceeds is what you're speaking to. Does that just get earmarked for the repayment of that?
The repayment for the line construction.
Really?
Just grossed the fund.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number seven, the 2016-2017 Emerald Potter Events Venue District Budget to consider enacted upon approval of Emerald Potter Events Venue District for the fiscal year 2016-2017. This budget is funded through a 5% carbon tax and 2% mutual on-fund tax. District operates, maintains, lower recruit, entertain, and services of Emerald Potter. Did you all receive a copy of the budget? Yes. And I want to recognize that one, that the names of the chairman of the Emerald Potter Events Venue District board is here. If you have any hard questions, we'll save those for, for Glenn.
I'm going to turn to the second page of the budget handout in the third column. The third column is the current year's budget. We're estimating that the district will start the year with $3.7 million in reserves and has total revenue of $3,076,97. The largest revenues is the hot tax revenue for just over $2 million, $2,018,950, and the vehicle rental tax of $970,000. If you look at the expenditure line items, the district has total expenditures of $2,532,370. The largest expenditure is the debt service of just over a million. And then I'm going to run through real quickly that we have two pieces of the project, the construction at the A&amp;C Center, the Tri-State Fairgrounds, and the construction of the Civic Center. Those two pieces basically split these dollars, 60-40, with 60% going to the A&amp;C Center. Original 60-40 split goes back to the original projects that the voters approved in '93. So if you look at account 63705, Tri-State Participation of $275,000, that's to do improvements out there, and again, it's based on the footprint of the original project. And then the next two lines are the A&amp;C Management Contract, $328,248 to help pay for operating costs associated with the project, and then $60,000 for property insurance. Account 63715, Civic Center Management Contract, $398,000. That's for operating costs at the Civic Center, again, only for the original footprint. And then Event Development, $77,868 are specific, that's to help bring specific events into the A&amp;C Center. And then the last one, Civic Center Improvement, $150,000. That would be if the city needs dollars to make improvements, again, only for the footprint piece, basically the add-on that was thrown back in the mix.
Michelle, is there anything slated for the improvement, the line item? I think it's $275,000.
Right now, there is not a specific improvement, but we give them dollars. It allows them, especially when they have events come in, like one of the improvements they did this year was to add the wireless capability for the events. So those dollars are there if they have a need. And then one last thing I want to go over is the ending reserve balance of $4,270. The district has a policy of leaving $500,000 in reserves, destroyed reserves. And then the A&amp;C share the reserves is the amount of $920, and the city shares the amount of $850.
I have a couple more questions on that page if I can. On the revenue side, the miscela needs revenue, it's a much smaller dollar, not $71,000, but I was just interested to know what...
Yes, it's directly related to the adequate event. The district participates in the event trust fund, and those dollars, $71,947, come from the state. And then the expense, the related expense is in the event development because A&amp;C, or the district has, gives those dollars back to the AQHA as of it, to help with costs associated with that event.
Okay, and then on the expenses side, there's a line item professional that is $18,000 this year. A couple years ago, that line item didn't exist, so I was just interested what was in that bucket.
Yes, $18,000, $10,000 of that is economic development impact associated with the event trust fund. And then we have another $6,000 that gives us the chance to use a consultant, as many events as we can get to participate in that event trust fund. Those are dollars that come from the state, back to the community. We can use them for event development or even reimbursement. So that's what that, that dollar amount is. Well, I did the typing, so I probably did. Okay.
Second to the last page. Under the, against tax and entity. Third item from the bottom, West Texas, maturity of assets. Do you tell it?
Sorry, how much? Thank you.
Sometimes it is... I'm sorry.
That's the worst thing I do this week.
I make a motion that we approve approval of the Emerald Potter Events Venue District for the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero. Thank you, Michelle.
Good job, Lynn. Thank you.
She loves Mariah. I want to do the counter. Oh, let me say one thing. Look, I need, need about this, you know, close the camp you make with the city. It's all a little bit of a... We reached a sale of the bonds, because most part of it, it goes away. For guarantee, we cannot operate out there without those. And also, every year, we put in some bigger events. You know, used to be coming and saying, "Well, I've got a nice place." Now they come in and say, "I'm going to steal it." We've placed them, how many nights there, there for stall nights. And so far, we have grown a little bit. And the Motel, Motel, they can prove. The Motel paid the guy to stay in there. But it's worked out really good, and we're protecting some bigger events all the time. Please, it's your work.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, number eight, records, preservation, restoration, and archive plan. We approve the records, preservation, restoration, and archive plan for District Park for 2016-2017.
Since we are able to get archived, we only need records management fees. We are to do an annual plan and to announce what we were doing, and so, and that's under the 51305 fee. That's the one that requires a annual plan. Well, I have been real estate gentleman for 15 years, and now it's coming to fruition. We're in and out, and we're obviously having the protection, except for, is the rate for this current plan?
Caroline, are there any changes to this plan as you present it?
You know, the only thing, no. The only thing I can say is that we are now moving forward on, you know, actual archives for the judges and having them to be able to view our records. I mean, it's, it's just a big step in both.
And then the fees on page two, those are the existing fees, those are the back fees that can be simplified, right?
Yes.
They're all nows.
Yeah, the first one is split between the county records management and the district park. And then the next one is the archiving fee, and that was $10. It changed last year or two sessions ago from $510, and with the possibility of changes, I think we have one session. And then the preservation fees for digitization, the next $10.
Thank you. Motion.
I move we approve the records, preservation, restoration, and archive plan for District Park for 2016-2017.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, five, zero. Number nine, resolution, Texas Edigent Defense Commission to consider enacted upon a resolution for the Edigent Defense Royal Grant.
Carrie, I just have one question on page two of the document. I just want to make sure that I, there's one line item in particular that caught my attention. The percentage of felony charges defended with appointed counsel, so fourth line item down, at 99%. So I looked back at 2011, and that was 64%. So what that number tells me, and I know this is right, this is my question, is that that every felony case that comes through Potter County's umbrella, 99% of them need court appointed counsel?
That is what this report says, but I would ask that you keep in mind that part of this information comes from the work, I think, of the OCA, and then another part comes from the financial piece. I'm not sure how they determine those, you say, the sources, but that is basically what this tells us.
Well, because even when you compare it just a few years ago to 2011, from 64% to 99%, that is a significant statistical move. Now, they just, I wanted to clarify that I didn't see that line item incorrect.
And Commissioner, there is a new statute that's going, well, a new Supreme Court rule about the inability to pay is now the ability to, to be able to pay. It is not inability anymore, so that's going to open it up to more people. They just need to come in and say, "I'm unable to pay the cost." And that includes simple filings. There's very little that we can question them on now.
So there's, so there's not a, a path forward for it?
There is a path forward, but it's a lot higher than it's been, and perhaps used to be 185% of poverty level. And it's gone greatly, it goes into effect in January, so it's really heavy.
So is it governed by documentation or is it just the ballot?
Yes, it's by documentation, and it's a big one that the Supreme Court has filled out. I mean, a term that we use, but we think over the state that it will be very hard to contest.
Are there any ramifications from filing the false report?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the only ramification, is having a false report, just a... Because you do have to...
You don't have to give a court report in turn.
Yeah, you do have to sign by an ovary or an...
Carrie, do you, on page three of this attachment, do you have any visibility as to how the awards are being allocated? Like, what, the line item that's certainly catching my attention is Potter County 2015, so the expense at $1.6 million, the award at $144,000, so an 8%. And then I compare that to our neighboring county, Randall, who's spending $908,000 and getting a fairly comparable award at $112,000. What drive is how they allocate those dollars, do we know? Okay, that would be a great question. Just because we are certainly growing in that trend, it'd be nice to know how those dollars get allocated. If we should be advocating, you know, certainly at a much higher level. Okay, thank you.
This is an issue that's going to be brought to the legislature this year by TAC.
Oh, yes.
We were given figures a few weeks ago that showed how the cost of engine fund for corps has gone up so drastically over the last several years, but the state funding figure is flat. So all of that increase has to be taken up by counties. And that's another, well, that's not a mandate. We need to fight to see, see if we can get some more state funds.
I appreciate this comparison on page three of those chapters. That's very helpful. Thank you.
I move that we approve the resolution for Edigent Defense for November 11.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Number 10, fiscal year 2016-2017 adoption of tax rate, sets the property tax rate for fiscal beginning October 1, 2016. As you know, the tax rate stays the same at .66402, as is effective maintenance and operation and debt service. And it will raise approximately 3.3% to people whose property will go in value approximately $19.22 a year.
I move that we approve the property tax rate for fiscal year 2016, which is .62393 per hundred dollar value for maintenance and operation, and .04009 for one hundred dollar valuation for debt service, for a total of .66402 per hundred dollar value.
Second.
Which is a 3.03% increase, as you said, Carrie.
From the effective date.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, number 11. To consider enacted upon the following, the tax office, the purchase of a website designed by Sturgis, streamlined in process for payment, and the purchase of a digital top remit system by technique, data systems, e-commerce, scanning and checking, tax payments. data systems allowing scanning and checking tax payments. This is coming up, and it's new.
Comal County is also the ones that did the barcode.
Yes. Where they have that on our statement as well.
They could stand with their phone and barcode and pay their taxes. They were highlighted at tackling.
Okay. We decided to go with this because Randall County is leading the Pratt website. And we felt it was a great opportunity for us to go out and see what was out there. And I checked with Kathy Katakaw's office and spoke to her chief deputy. And they had the ability to edit that website, which we don't have that ability with the Pratt website. We're dependent on the Crayzel district sending it to their company and waiting, you know, to get those updates done. And we just think this would be a good time for us to also split.
Carrie, will there also be a link on Pratt's website? So, if someone's searching for it, they can get the direct link from Potter County?
And there'll be a link on ours to go to Pratt, too.
Okay. What's, I saw the breakdown of expenses, but is this currently slotted for budget, currently in your budget?
I have it in this year's budget, so I can get started.
Which account does that come from?
It's your, your.
Well, I think that's really, really good, stepping in the right direction.
And maybe just a step ahead.
Yeah.
Anyone want to leave something or together? I'll answer what you say, I can't believe. Well, the other thing is actually equipment that I'm willing to pay for out of my IT funds. The only thing that would come out of budget, and it really wouldn't be for budget until 2017, is the maintenance portion of it.
How much is the maintenance?
The maintenance is $16.44. So, explain this to us. Explain this, and we'll go over this desktop for instance. This is a machine that will run our checks and our payment steps through. And it fills it. And we can actually take that report and directly load it into our tax system. And it will automatically post those statements without one of my employees having to spend all morning and half the afternoon doing that. It also will do my deposit, where I can send those checks directly to the bank. And they will get to the bank quicker. Whereas with armored car right now, they're sitting over not in their warehouse. And this would be both my motor vehicle checks and my property tax checks. Whereas right now, my motor vehicle checks sit there in the office, you know, to be picked up by armored car. Property tax checks, for our busy season, I do actually drop those over to the bank. So, that would take a little bit of lovability off of me personally, taking those checks. But it would also get them to the bank quicker.
What kind of savings would you have?
I'm hoping at least a hundred dollars a month. We're in negotiations with them right now. They're looking at our contract because our office pays the most for all offices that use them. And a lot of it is because of the liability that they have, because our deposits are so large. Well, this will significantly drop that deposit total.
I think from a safety perspective, it makes sense to move to a more electronic method because of the dollar amount. And I know we've had a lot of conversations at court and security and where people are entering and so on.
Service fee is inland also, it's going to be.
Yes.
Obviously save a lot more money by putting all that stuff in one page, all of that branded.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of a website designed by Sturgis, streamlining the process for payment and the purchase of a desktop system for technology data systems, allowing for scanning of checks and tax payment stamps.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the favor, raise your hand. Sue, let's share it. Thank you. Right, number 12, neighborhood planning to provide update on the city, county, neighborhood planning process.
We had a meeting last week, last Thursday, and I attached, there was a couple of city man row capital improvement plan in a single packet. I printed the wrong one that I wanted to reference, so I added that. It should have been, but a couple of things I wanted to give you in terms of timeline. We met with Kelly Shaw at the city. They have a new planning director, AJ, that has now joined the city in row. And so, some of that will be a new process getting her acclimated. But the North Heights Initiative, what we started off, they're in their final phases and starting to identify their priorities. A lot of good movement, I think, as a part of that. So, we expect that to be wrapping up around the November timeline. One thing that I thought was very interesting that I learned at this meeting, and I didn't know that before, because when we started this initiative, there was a lot of, you know, public comments, as there should be of, "Here we go again, how is this different?", those kind of things. But one thing I learned at this meeting, when this plan is done for the North Heights, it will actually become an addendum or an amendment to the city's capital planning process, or their strategic plan. So, it'll get added to the city's strategic plan. So, I didn't even know that was an option, that they could amend that a little down the road. So, I think that'll be a great movement for the community, that they can certainly be a part of their strategic initiatives in the city. So, I wanted to share that the next one we're expecting in the January timeline, which will be the body of. And I'll give a note regarding that at my town hall meeting this Thursday as well. But January of 2017, kind of kickoff, look, they're already doing some works on some of the preliminary demographics. We expect it as a result of going through this, San Jacinto will be the third one. Will be some things that we learned, kind of step one, instead of continuous priorities from community, community. So, that will come and I'll continue to update the court. But the attachment that I wanted to reference, and again, I thought this was important because of the community input of, here we go again, kind of how is this different? The city, what is currently in their capital improvement program, kind of slated to go to the community, is 500,000 roughly each year as a part of these initiatives. So, you'll notice, really aggregate that out, you're five, 2.69 million dollars. Each of these kind of slotted in. So, this all started with the county, 75,000, that said, "Hey, let's talk, what could this be?" And the city is starting to plan strategically for that, should this ultimately go through. So, this is still preliminary, but I did want to show you that because I thought it was important about what's different. And we will be educating the community as a part of that. Okay. Any questions?
Okay, number 12, law enforcement corporation?
We also met last week and a couple of updates that I wanted to share with the court. So, we met last Wednesday, the text dot streetscape. We will expect to see that February of 27, 2017. We'll start to initiate that till that, you'll notice some of that construction happening. The parking garage, I'm sure you can physically see all of the changes. But it is on schedule, slated to be done March of 2017. They're getting bids on the garage as we speak, and they had six at the pre-bid meeting. There are discussions, Les Simpson brought up questions about paint parking and kind of where we are on that again. So, some of that will be coming to the LGC, he asked for an agenda item. The convention hotel, expecting to open late spring, summer of 2017. They said the first of November, all of the exterior will be completed. And I think the reason certainly that strategy is used because of the weather shifts and so all their work will be, excuse me, internal into the hotel. So, I wanted to share that. The MPEV, lots of discussions, no surprise about the baseball team and what that future will look like. But there is movement on demolishing the Coca-Cola building as we know it today. So, bids were being awarded for demolition, November 7th is the demolition of the actual building. So, there'll be some type of ceremonial event as soon as I know those details. I'll certainly make sure we include the whole work. There were 12 bidders on that process. There is one building that is actually going to get saved, for lack of a better word, as a part of that demolition. I've had the opportunity to tour it. It's a small warehouse. I wouldn't have even known it was there had I not asked to be let into it. But it is a small warehouse that could potentially be used for some type of youth sports. And what that looks like, they're still deciding, but they're saving that one building for use. It, yeah, it's kind of in the middle of that footprint, and it's right across from city hall. And so, there's that one building. There was some talk about maybe a plaza to connect the two, but I don't think any of that has still been decided yet. But that one building is being reserved because it is so solid in terms of foundation, to at least until they have future plans for it. But that demolition will start to happen in November. So, as you physically kind of see those changes. And then for the court, I wanted to bring a copy of my town hall meeting this Thursday. I know Commissioner Kelly had asked for this in particular. One of the things that we are going to have, which is agenda item three on there, is the first community access tour. So, these are model homes for the downtown hotel that are running water. I mean, you really could look at what a room looks like. They're going to open that to us. And so, we're actually going to be on Johnson Street. It's a city building where will be that particular town hall meeting. But you have access to go in and look at the rooms and see what's coming. So, I wanted to open that certainly to the audience in the court if you'd like to attend.
That's wrong. You got one more.
Oh, the end of report. So, you should also have a copy of this in front of you, and there should be several copies as you walk in. So, this is three to four year project. And I have to really say thank you to so many in the audience, Julie and Caroline and Jason and Sherry. I know I'm going to miss several people, but this, Carrie, has been going on several years. So, thank you for your patience and all your edits. But this is unveiling the Potter County annual report. We worked with Dataflow on this. One kind of neat fact that I'll share is Tyler Mitchell was the graphic designer, and he is the one who designed the official new city logo that won and is the current city logo. So, I think that's a great kind of piece of information. But we have this in print, a stack of these will go to Julie and to Caroline and to Sherry, where there's a lot of community traffic. But we can certainly order those. It's on our website now, so you should also be able to see it on your phone. And thank you, Jason, because it turns the page for you, very slick. I told you, you're showing off now. But it is very nice to see on a mobile device. One thing that I think is nice is we have the structure of this. So, as these numbers change from year to year, we use the audit that triggers some of these dollar amounts. So, Jason has those credentials, and we can update that in-house every year, so we can continue this. So, again, just an effort for transparency and a good look and feel of what's happening in Potter County. Thank you all for everybody that helped me with this.
Thank you for your. All right, now onto the bidding for the day. Fifteen, Potter County law enforcement complex projects. To hear presentations regarding the following items and consider and act upon the recommendation by the Phase Three Advisory Committee to authorize Potter County to go out for competitive sealed bids, authorize architecture services for the bidding, and construction administrative services for this project. So, John, Carrie, Larry, Ryan.
I will be in the background several minutes, several minutes, something coming up. Tell me a little bit about what's going on. What I thought I must do, though, and why to hear your report on the strategic planning that you engaged with. Now, just taking back a little bit, Tom, about five years ago, the county put together an advisory committee to start looking at what's your critical facility needs to work. Just to show you that this process does indeed work, the most critical facility that was identified as part of that, that whole planning process was the need to replace the sheriff's office for all the reasons that we've mentioned through the years now. So, here we are today on the cusp of being able to go out for bid on that project. And hopefully, the next year and a half, see that whole process come to fruition with the new sheriff's facility that will serve the county for a few long time. So, our purpose today here is to seek the court's approval to go out to bid for this project. And there are documents that will be used to support this process, and you're welcome to approve those if you wish. It gets down to how many threads are going to be in the street, if there was a wall socket for the plug. I think it's going to be detailed out to that level of information. We all have been working on this from different, different perspectives now. The planning commission staff has worked closely with purchasing to make sure that the process is properly set, that it complies with all the governing laws or laws that govern county purchasing here in the state of Kansas. It's been reviewed by legals. We've been setting the process in ways for transparent, thorough process. One of the things that is really going to be critical for this process, of course, it has its most investment. And one of the things that we're putting in the street, that is, is not only is it most qualified. So, each one of these bidders is going to have to submit as part of their bid a detailed statement of their qualifications. And some of this is lessons learned throughout the projects that we have been working on. So, that will make for a good process of trying to pair up the lowest price with the most qualified contractor to do this work for the county. Now, senior agenda back in the day, there should have been two others supporting documents. One was the current budget estimate. It's actually down here just like the envelope and the health project schedule. And in the memo that accompany those two items, you'll see abbreviated, scheduled for. These get us through this first phase of being able to get the contract in order. So, we'd be looking at going out for bids, if possible, of course, that are authorized. So, starting actually tomorrow, we'll be getting those posted in paper. And of course, by state law, we have to, we have to focus that too, in certain weeks. We'll be giving contractors, and there's a lot of good answers actually in this project. I think Vicki's been getting calls all the way from Latvia or someplace like that. So, anyway, I hope that bodes well for getting good prices. Mike will be conducting some limited, we'll be conducting a mandatory pre-bid on October 11th. Prior to that, the real go-getter contractors will have the opportunity to go out and visit the site under Mike Hitt's direction. So, I have that opportunity. And then, if they haven't been out to the site prior to the pre-bid, no, the pre-bid basically is where you take advantage of this opportunity to make sure everybody clearly understands what's going, what a good bid's going to consist of. Gives them the opportunity to ask the architect, purchasing, any questions they might have to clarify in a setting where all the other bidders are going to be, so the same information's being transmitted to everybody somehow. To make sure we get good bids on this project. But if they haven't gone to, to visit the site prior to that, then they will have to go following the pre-bid on 11. We want to make sure everybody's fully aware of the conditions on the side prior to the bid process, so it doesn't create problems for you later on. It's like typo in your memo. The bids will be due at 12 o'clock on October 31st. We moved that back just a little bit because I understand FedEx delivers last at 10:30 in the morning. We wanted to give everybody that last opportunity to make sure they get their bids in. But still, even on this property, the AGC four hour time limit's going to be imposed. That means that they've got to have their bids fully completed at least four hours prior to the time they drop it. And that's to make sure they've got all their subcontractors ticking a time, so that you don't have people that deals out in the hall five minutes before the bids are due. Because again, we want good bids for this project, this big project. So, they need to put some planning, advanced planning into place to make sure they've got all their subcontractors properly locked out.
John, where will the meeting on the 11th be?
In the, I'm in the auditorium. So, we'll be taking full advantage of the auditorium.
At what time?
It's going to be 10 o'clock. Good catch, by the way, we're out there in the audience going, we forgot to put in time, sorry. Then on the 31st, we'll have a formal bid opening at 2 o'clock up in the auditorium. And we'll just basically open the bids, read them live, and that's it. Then we'll spend several weeks, Mr. Ursin will be checking some of the, will be checking qualifications and methods of the bidders primarily focusing on the three. veterans of the bidders primarily focusing on the three of his peers to make sure that, first of all, they've entered markets for a qualified bid is, and then secondly, checking their credentials to make sure that everything they claimed on their statement qualifications is true. And then in that interim, after Larry has done some of his background work and is prepared to present that to the Phase Three Committee, the committee will be go through that information and develop a recommendation and bid order for the court's consideration. And it's intended to be planned right now. We intend to do that. So there are two things that you're being asked to consider today. First of all, to authorize the bids to go for publication. And secondly, the way your design services contract is set up anytime you need a major phase work, which we're about to encounter right now, the construction phase, then the court has to authorize proceeding in that next phase of the contract with Architectesis, which in this case is going to be the bidding phase and it'll also be the construction administration phase. So that will complete all the work elements in your contract with Architectesis all the way through the end of the project. So at this point in time, Mike, you want to start off talking about the grocery list items? I do want to point out one thing about that. As you're looking at those numbers, Mike's probably the head on this street. But as you look at those grocery list items, keep in mind that there's better than a 10% project contingency built into the grocery list for any idiosyncrasms that may be encountered on this project. Now, this is new construction with the courthouse restoration. It was important that you had a contingency fund of that amount because we're building behind walls that nobody had seen since 1920. But this is brand new construction. So those kinds of complexities shouldn't arise on this project, but it's still very prudent to leave that kind of money reserved just in case something does come up. So as far as budget goes, you're looking pretty good around that. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
John, I do have a quick question before you leave the podium. So the RFB that's being issued for Potter County Law Enforcement Complex, I'm not sure, and I'm not on the committee, so can you give me five questions that you guys have vetted? I have received several calls thinking that that's a new jail as well. So I don't know where we are in the process, if there's room to make whatever we call this more transparent to the community. But I have received several calls and kind of out and about in the community thinking that that includes a new jail.
Right.
So I want to share that.
You know, we, in times past, we talked to you, we called it the Law Enforcement Center.
Even admin complex, I think it's a little more.
And it's all, it's all encompassing really because you've got three major components of this, this project, which indeed makes it a complex. You're talking about the Law Enforcement Center, that we've been talking about all of. You've got a dry storage facility and that was something you all considered your last meeting. We wanted us to relocate that to a more convenient side of the building for the, for the sheriff's office. And then finally, you've got the vehicle maintenance facility. So there's nothing jail related in that project. And we stated that all along. Even from the inception, we've stated that this has nothing to do with the jail. Even when you look at the bond documents, it basically says everything about jail. Because we want it to be very clear and transparent that this has absolutely nothing to do with the jail. It's just consolidating all of the sheriff's facilities in one location, which hopefully will make it more cost effective and efficient in the years to maintain all the law enforcement programs and activities that the sheriff's department is required to maintain. So I, I, I don't know. I could say to the camera and say, it's not jail. It's not jail.
Well, that's what I'm saying is if we're at a point, once you go out for the bid process, I know you're really locked into calling it what it is. And so if you're looking for input, we now have an opportunity to even just slap in the word admin on it because the normal taxpayer and community member is not looking at the bond proceeds, sale documents, they're not looking at prior conversations. So in the title, we have an opportunity to make it clear to the community versus just saying, well, we said it's not jail. Let's just call it something that makes it very visible. But I'm hearing no.
During the, in the three public meetings that we have, we were all there, reached stress to everybody. Everybody there, it is not a jail, it is an administration building only. And then, well, and then during the process, we changed it to Law Enforcement Complex to make it encompass the, the three facilities, but not a jail.
So what is the issue about, and how to get admin versus law enforcement?
No, it was just an idea that somebody had to win.
Even Potter County Law Admin Complex. I'm not locked into what we call it. I'm just saying we have an opportunity here before we get going because we will hear this four times in a row.
And I have a duty of the commission, we will take advantage of the opportunity to make sure that, and as we, we've tried so far. By the way, I've got a tribute to Sheriff Thomas because that's what he said during each one of those three public meetings.
Not a jail.
So can we add the word admin to it? Is that by discretion of the court and I could make a motion? I, I.
All the documents are consistently states Potter County Law Enforcement Complex project and they're consistent to where.
Well, and we do, we're pretty clear when we explain what that call is. For this document, it does consist of three elements that we discussed. And Marcy, I mean, Commissioner, Commissioner, I fully understand. Personally, I fully understand the concern because everybody gets to the level of understanding because they're all.
Even the title was misleading, were you?
Well, it wasn't, but the committee came up with this, this title, the whole committee did, and they changed it from Sheriff Admin to Potter County Law Enforcement Complex. I think you did it, John.
I think I'm Sheriff Thomas. He's not here right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hearing no, so if it's taking time, I'm prepared because it is very misleading.
I, I can, I can guarantee.
Well, we all compare. We've told him the resilient time.
So I mean, somebody up here really knows what they're talking about. I asked Mike to come up here and explain what's on that grocery list. One other thing too, I'll get away from here real quick, I promise. I talked a little bit about the contingency, contingency fund earlier. Another safety valve that's been built into the bidding itself is that you've got some alternates that each one of the bidders will have to respond to. Most of those are de-dive alternates. That means that if somehow the cost coming greater than anticipated, I'll tell you, a good deal of time has been spent putting, and effort has been put into estimating these. So they're as good as they can be. But if something were going high, if they were coming higher than expected, you've got these six different de-dive alternates there that you can work with to kind of bring that cost back down. Stuff that maybe need to be deferred to other years like expanding the secure employee parking at, at the sheriff's facility. So those, you've got, you've got some building to play with the pricing after it comes in to make sure you can keep it in motion. So I think that gets on the key points I'll be getting on that.
Thank you, John. I'd like to touch on what John just said. The alternates, are these things going to be, we will consider it. It just doesn't stop there. We do value engineering through this project. Larry and I will go through this on a daily basis and to see how we can continue to keep this project within budget. What I want to speak on today is the grocery list. That's the terminology we used a long time ago. This is all cost expenditure that's over and above the actual project cost for the general contractor. The last time I presented this to the court was July of 2015. The attachment that you do have right now, I'm just going to give you a brief summary of why these things increased or decreased. Category number one's your environmental. We had a reduction on it because the county during our last demolition on the old rig jail out there, we did not have to do as much environmental cleanup as we anticipated. Category two on the demolition, we had an increase on that due to the code 15 in the, I mean, I'm sorry, the old rig and jail whenever it was torn down, the costs did come in just a little higher. Category number three and four strictly deals with the law enforcement building. This is the construction and to occupy both of those categories. We had an increase within those two categories. One of them was due to the T D O R fees on our res reviews and stuff for the, for the building. We had some security systems. When I first presented this cost to you, we've been waiting on those costs to come in. They finally came in. And then the furnishings is one of the biggest increases on that particular building. Category five and six, combined vehicle garage, basically the same three items of why you had increases to D L R furnishings. Category seven and eight, this is your storage building. We actually had a decrease within this project due to revision of the scope of work. And then item 11 is the parking lot demolition and construction owner contingency. This right here was basically an increase due to we increased the scope of work. We're removing more asphalt, the road coming in out there at 29th. We're actually under this scope. We're removing it, putting in a new road because it's in very poor condition. Minor things like that. You, you do not see a category nine and 10. Those were pulled out of the original grocery list. That strictly deals with the district or center. I keep this for my numbering sequence where I can stay on track of where I originally presented to you. And that is it on the grocery list. I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Well, one of the first thing that the county staff and citizens who helped sort out this committee, because they've spent a lot of time working on this project with us, I really appreciate that. In particular, Mike Head, the sheriff, and Chief Johnson, you know, spent a lot of time helping us get answers to questions throughout this entire process. I think Mike knew what he was in for. I'm not so sure the sheriff and chief Johnson did though. So what you have in front of you is this spreadsheet. I wanted to kind of walk through and answer any questions you have. There are four primary elements that you've heard about here on this building, on this complex. We have the law enforcement center, vehicle maintenance building, storage building, the site paving around the potential center, and then the new, the large secure parking. Look at these numbers here. All the buildings very slightly increased in size just during the design process, very minor things, really just the normal adjustments. The largest change that occurred was really actually in the community room at the administration building, the enforcement center. That was due really to code requirement of how many people they required to be in that space in the event of a tornado. So that adjustment was made. The base amount originally for all of this work is 15,401,741 dollars. Where we're at now is at 15,625,594, which is over approximately 223,000, but that includes all of the alternates that I'm going to go through right now. So we're actually under all the base work on this project according to our estimate. So the de-dive alternates we have is the repaving of the secure parking, which was just recently added through Commissioners' Court. We have the trellis at the outdoor area at the law enforcement center, irrigation at code 15 building, where we removed the code 15 building, landscaping at the existing potential center. That's only a limited areas that were affected by the new parking work that we're doing. New chain link fence on the west side of the property, weight finding signage. So when you drive in, you have markers that identify where the buildings are and where to drive to. And then the last one is the lampposts and regrading for 29th Street and Avenue L. And one thing that's not in here that we're just made part of our base bid is actually where we are, I think Mike mentioned it, repaving both of those streets, which we originally were not going to do. So that totals, those de-dive alternates, 421,110 dollars. Those are included in that base bid above. That's all work that was beyond the base. So in, in, as a whole, we actually are like 198, 200,000 dollars under budget from what we originally scoped on the project. So I think we're in really good shape. And there's a really, you know, nice contingency set aside too. So we're really excited about this project going out to bid and, you know, ready to see this go for the sheriff and all the county.
And Larry, to bring those numbers all the way down, still looking at roughly the same total project amount, 21 million. And so we, I'm hearing you say we booked here, we've been able to save here, but ultimately the dollar amount is roughly the same.
Uh, yeah, we're actually a little bit lower. I think where we're at now is 20,756,308 dollars. And that includes, pardon if I'm wrong with your carrier mic, I think we've got about a 1.7 million dollar contingency.
Thank you.
And that figure includes, that's correct. It does. And I think that's also below the bond amount right now. Couple of quick dates too that I think many have not been mentioned. John mentioned bid dates. Bids come in on October 31st. The notice to proceed is going to be December 1st of this year for the contractor. And project completion, unless on your schedule, is what we're estimating right now will be January of 2018. Contractor will actually identify the number of days of construction when the building is going to be finished. That is January, it's actually January 3rd, 2018. And so immediately after that, the sheriff will move in. And then we're actually going to go through a process of selling furniture and equipment that's in this existing building and then actually doing some demolitions of that building. So we've actually a little bit more work that's still going to be done this part of this calendar after that. But I think the key thing right now is get the sheriff bid is, is the demolition of this building and equipping the toy.
And it's our.
And all our feeds too.
And that's slated May of 18, of 18 for that demolition.
Yes, that's the completion. Correct. We'll start in April.
We're going to move this project.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
I want to say a couple of things. The main thing for purchasing right now to kick off this project is, like John, is going to emphasize that we have to do the competitive sealed bid advertisement, which those will go two consecutive weeks. It's really, really imperative to know all questions. Once this goes down the street, they must be filled for purchasing. So we can make sure all that information gets into one central area and we can competitively and ethically give everyone the same information. And so now the questioning is filled. Sometimes it's easy for somebody to, to get questions filled in the direction. So the documents specifically say they must go for purchase.
I'll move to authorize the county purchase department to offer competitive sealed bids on Potter County Law Enforcement Complex project according to the construction documents presented today. Second.
Have a motion.
Why don't I have one more? What do you have?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I want to put words in your mouth. So you also need to consider going ahead and allowing Architectesis to move forward with the last phases of the law.
Have a motion in a second. On my favor, is ready. Okay, thank you, everybody. Number 16, Potter County Projects. If you have.
No.
Anything today? Okay. Employment items, collections department discharge of Rodine Scott is going to be effective September 7. The inner department on Frank's fur, Francis Backfield from Port Hough, the full town, who requested to be done. And then the road bridge, the former of Dr. Grant is a frequent appearance professor at the U.S. Department of Southern, the gentleman of 1216. Need a motion to review these.
Move through the four items.
Motion in a second. On my favor, is your hand. The jail report today is 544 people in our jail, 448 of those are male, 96 female, and 10 of those are shoulders. There's 83% felons, 11% misdemeanor, and 6% other.
90 female, 96 female, and 96, 2 of those are shoulders.
Number 63, 96, 20 of those are with shoulders.
Last week we had 96 here, 10 in children, but we've got something else, so now we got 10 in children, 86, I believe, yeah.
I was doing a live report, it's on Channel 10 of the jail, Justice Administration Office, and I was in and out of the venue, waiting to do that shot, and I saw six people getting back to pick up. They were being released from jail, getting back to pick up, leaving. And that'd be some noise. Yeah, oh, God, right. Okay, is there anything for next time? Is there any insurance items?
Insurance. No, is that your session info for next time that we discussed, anybody? Prayer, oh, mine, it was supposed to be passed, but we never, just concerned that she's going to call back, but they should have set for sometime in October.
You know, we had an October.
Oh, it's October.
Well, here's what I'm going to say, the contractor we have right now, I'm using that, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Okay. Well, just take that, but you just use that about how to put it.
The papers, yes.
You're out there. Okay, nothing else?